Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to July 15, 2014 Post Falls City Council Meeting. We just concluded a budget workshop prior to the meeting and are now moving into the regular meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. And a couple of announcements. Congratulations to the graduating River City Leadership Class. Among those graduating today were the city's finance director, Jason Faulkner, Detective Sergeant Dave Beck, and Assistant City Engineer Rob Paulus. Congratulations to all of you folks. And O'Carroll is also involved in the Leadership Academy, so thanks for all you do, and congratulations on finishing. Also, we received a letter, I guess I should say, and I think Mr. Malloy said it as well, this should come as no surprise. Dear Mayor Jacobson and council members, it is my pleasure to inform you that the Post Falls Police Department has successfully completed the Idaho Chiefs of Police Association re-accreditation process. During an onsite inspection by members of the ICOPA accreditation team on June 23, 2014, your police department was found to be in compliance with all accreditation standards set by ICOPA. This milestone achievement came with no small effort. Our special thanks go out to Chief Scott Hogan and his staff for taking this opportunity and putting forth their efforts in meeting the accreditation standard set forth by ICOPA. This is an accomplishment that you and the citizens of Post Falls can be proud of as it demonstrates your dedication to maintaining a progressive and professional police department for your community. Once again, on behalf of the Idaho Chiefs of Police Association, we congratulate you and your city on this outstanding achievement. Sincerely, R. David Moore, retired chief of police, City of Blackfoot, ICOPA accreditation coordinator. Chief, Pat, congratulations, and please pass our congratulations on to staff. Good job. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none, sir.
Thank you. I will find myself here. Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
It's such a shortlist. Item A is minutes from July 1, 2014. Item B is payables July 1 through July 7, 2014. Item C is the Rastor Mountain Communications Tower Construction Award, and item D is a request to auction two surplus police vehicles.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I have a question. On item D, chief, any idea what you're going to get for these cars?
We send them to auction and we get usually between $600 and $900 out of those vehicles when they go to auction. Typically, they're pretty worn out. These vehicles have about 120, 130,000 miles on them, and with idle time, you can almost double that, and so we don't get a whole lot out of them.
Reason I ask is not so much the fact that what we can get out of them, but I noticed that there's, that the car that's parked out at Walmart acts as somewhat of a deterrent. I wonder if for no more than we're getting out of those cars, if it wouldn't be better to have them parked someplace to slow the speeders down or be a deterrent in another place of business?
Yeah, and we've had the phantom, we call it the phantom car program for a number of years.
Give it away, didn't they?
Yeah, you did, to the whole public, but...
He was talking about Walmart and Spokane.
That's the one he sells too now.
New guy.
In fact, when we had it on Seltise, there were several times when there was for sale signs put on it and that type of stuff, so get a lot of humor out of it. But we do use a phantom car program, and the cars that we do use for that are surplus vehicles that we just don't strip all the equipment off of. So we do think about that, but I think we have a sufficient number of those right now, and so as we get these vehicles that are just no longer serviceable even for that, I mean, a lot of these cars need some, some serious work to them, we feel it's best to send it to auction rather than put taxpayer dollars into them to keep them running.
Thankfully, we don't have too many individuals who are stealing from Walmart watching this particular program, so we're probably okay.
Any other questions?
You're going to get a letter from somebody, I know.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve as presented.
Motion seconds, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Welham?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Neglected to mention up front, we do have three public hearings tonight. If you wish to testify in any of the public hearings, there's forms on the ideas, please fill them out and give them to our clerk, and we will have them for the record. The first public hearing is the IAAR annexation. With that, I will open public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. If you had been with me real quick, the, my presentation's actually in reversed order from AMB, so I'm going to get it strained out here real quick.
Oh, perfect.
Randy and Annette Wells. They're on there. Oh, Betty Garrett, there's the annexation right here. Randy Wells is the annexator.
So the IAAR annexation, case file A-14-04, the applicant is IAAR Idaho LLC, and the representative is present this evening. The city council is being asked to review the annexation request, determine that the request at R1 zoning conforms to the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, and approve the annexation request with the appropriate zoning. The project location, as you see here at the asterisk, is south of Maplewood Avenue and just east of Cedar Street a bit and north of Spokane River. The approximate size is 10 acres. The comp plan designation would be residential. The current land use is vacant, and the current zoning would be Agg Suburban in Cootney County. Surrounding land uses are residential or vacant, and the water provided would be City Post Falls and sewer as well. And looking at the surrounding zoning, you've got some vacant R1 zone just to the west in the city of Post Falls, and to the north, R1 subdivision. To the east would be your area that's low-density, residential in the county and called Agg Suburban with its zoning designation, north of Spokane River. The proposed zoning, as you see here, is, would be for, is more specifically 10 acres, and per Title 18, this would normally be processed under either the SC2 or SC3. But as you see in this river, in the magenta color, that approximate two acres extends in, under the high-water markets, the 1% chance of annual flood, so that would make the approximate buildable area less than eight acres. And why that's important is because per Section 18 dot 04 dot 040, Administrative Instruction subsection C within the Title 18 smart code zoning, in lands that are less than 10 acres, it's up to city council to determine whether or not the annexation would be done under a smart code zoning designation or under conventional zoning designation. So tonight, I'll present both, and it'll be up to you as, when the public hearing concludes to determine the appropriate path going forward. With the SC2 zone, it'd be one unit per five acres. It's fairly similar to the R1S, as it's the other agg-type rural zone that we have within conventional of one unit an acre, although it is significantly lower in density. When you look at the SC3, it's very, very similar to the R1 zoning with five units per acre, but that's a maximum versus in the SC3, it's a minimum of three units per acre. So there's a little difference there, but as smart code has developed, SC3's been used as your typical single-family home zone. So at this point, this will do the general introduction of smart code and the application for annexation.
Questions, John? Applicant, name for the record, please. You have 15 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Schreiber Way, City of Coeur d'Alene. John pointed out a very similar map earlier, just showing the location of the property. This is Maplewood Avenue, right here, Cedar Street is just off of the map. It's adjacent to the Everwood Estates and the Timber River subdivisions. It's surrounded, the yellow color you see there is currently R1 zone, so we've got R1 to the west and R1 to the north. We are requesting a R1 zone, as John had discussed, even though the property is slightly over that 10-acre threshold, it's actually 10.01 acres. However, as you can see in the aerial, the southern portion of the property here is actually below the ordinary high-water mark inundated, as John said, by the 1% annual chance flood plan. It's unusable property, we can't build on it. So really, the net effect, as you can see, we lose about two acres, so really, we have an eight-acre usable piece. That's why we're requesting the R1 traditional zoning. That, and we have R1 to the west and to the north of the project. I think everything else is covered in the staff report. I don't have anything further unless you guys have questions for me.
Any questions to Drew? Thank you. Staff report.
So the Planning Division reviewed this application request for the annexation and found that the property is within the Post Falls area city impact. The boundary of the proposed annexation is contiguous with city limits. A single-family residential R1 zoning designation would be appropriate in considering the surrounding environment and would be consistent with the adjacent properties. The Engineering Division reviewed this in regards to transportation and found that the proposed annexation and requested land use classification would not adversely affect the city's transportation system. Also, additional rights away would not be required along Maplewood Avenue. In regards to water reclamation, the city has the available facilities to service the proposed annexation, and for domestic water, is that it's located adjacent to the properties along Maplewood Avenue, and the city has the facility to facilitate the project. This here is a condition that if council chooses to go the path of smart code rather than conventional R1, that there'd be a condition that upon such time, either the land subdivides or that a residential permit, because currently it's vacant, there's no longer, there's not a structure there, it's all vacant, that a neighborhood plan shall be developed and approved prior to an issuance of such permit. Typically, with annexations in smart code, we would look at how the transportation pattern is and how it connects to adjoining communities and area and come up with a neighborhood plan, but in this, this location, it may not be the most appropriate. So at this time, I stand for any questions you have on...
Any questions, John?
Thank you.
Clerk, we have any one wishing to testify? Thank you, Shannon. Mr. Bob Flowers does wish to speak and is neutral. I don't know if I've ever said that about you, Bob.
Neutral.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Bob Flowers, I couldn't think of a better use for this land than R1. In fact, as far as I'm concerned, we should take the smart code and send it back to wherever it came from, but R1 would be perfect. And I believe that the next logical step with this annexation would be instead of stopping at Cedar, take it to Ross Point Road. And it, that, you've got that whole section of homes in there that should have been part of the city a long time ago, but for some reason, never have. And I think it would be a good idea sometime in the future to look at it, but I can't think of a better purpose for that land down there than homes right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. That was all the testimony. I don't imagine that rebuttal time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification, we are requesting the R1 zone. If you guys do decide to go the smart code route, we would prefer SC3 over the SC2.
Thank you for the clarification. With that, I'll close public hearing. Council deliberation, you'd like to start?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. We like those.
I would agree with Bob Flowers, that'd be perfect for R1.
Yeah, just to address what Bob questioned, is, I don't think that we as a council are comfortable with blanket annexation, but if I had that power, I'd probably do the same thing, Bob. And I'm okay with the R1 versus the smart code.
Joe, Carrie, me?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the IAAR annexation, file number A-14-04, with a R1 land use designation.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Welham?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Thank you, folks. Next public hearing, Garrett Adams and Cassoon Annexation, A1403. That'll open the public hearing.
The applicants are Randy and Ruth Wells, George Adams, and Robert Cassoon. The requested action is that city council is being asked to review the annexation request, determine that the request at SC4 zoning conforms to the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan and smart code zoning ordinance, Title 18A, and approve the annexation request with SC4 zoning. There's been some previous action on this particular request. As part of the 15th, 16th realignment project, city council authorized July of 2012 the execution of a letter of agreement to process this annexation application under the SC4 zoning designation, but with the understanding that the SC4 zoning was not a guarantee, though. The project location is right where you see the asterisk, east of Idaho and south of 16th Avenue. What's being, what you see here in blue is the five lots. You see the road going through here and that remaining triangular. That's actually technically a part of this lot to the south, but there's five lots that approximate to 15 acres, and you have R1 zoning to the north and west of this proposed annexation, and at the southwest corner, you do have some commercial and limited commercial. So going forward, as this develops, typically, you wouldn't, in an ideal situation, have single-family homes right next to commercial, you'd have some transitional uses. So you could see as this develops, some transitional and pattern of development, whatever that may be. The project size is approximately 15 acres, as stated. On the comprehensive plan, we have a conventional future land use map that designated this as residential, and a smart code future land use map that has designated as G4 infill, and this would be an infill area. Current land use is residential and vacant, with the water being provided by City Post Falls as well as the sewer. So as part of the introduction, is what we did with the Planning and Zoning Commission, is to present the SC4, kind of describe it a little bit, because we don't get a lot of smart code projects and annexations compared to other conventional, we're more familiar with conventional requests, and how it affects Post Falls in this area. So when you look at the smart code, the general character and description would be to provide for a mix of houses, townhomes, small apartment buildings with scattered commercial, balance between landscape and buildings, with some presence of some pedestrians. And in looking at residential, you can see that there's a difference between SC3 and SC4, and why, SC3 is typically, as stated in the previous public hearing, part of your single-family home type subdivision, and in SC4, you get a mixing of residential that permits all the residential types within that zoning designation. When you look at lodging, office, and retail, it also permits that within that zone, so it's kind of a mixed form-based code that more or less allows it to morph with the surrounding environments as the, the market may choose. On the left-hand side of the screen, you see SC1 through SC6. This is kind of the transitioning of how it transitions ideally from a rural to an urban setting, and what you see in the outline in red could be perceived as approximate equivalent of this request as far as an area, considering when you look at Prairie to Southeast Way. Also, in the context of this annexation request, where does this fit within Post Falls and its location? It's about .6, six miles just north of I-90. If you were to drive there via 16th Avenue, it'd be 1.2 miles down 15th, and then you'd head south to the Spokane, that interchange, and if you went 16th to 41, that'd be about 2.8 miles that route. It's a, it's a less than a quarter mile, I mean, sorry, a half a mile from the intersection of Mullen and Idaho Street, and so that's where you see the Super One store, and it's a pretty busy intersection. Around that area, you also have some, I think you have manufactured home park, as well as some other mix between single-family homes and multifamily. Also to note is, with the city being a little over 30,000, and this being a county pocket, and with areas in close proximity to our major transportation cores, these type of requests, either it be an SC4 or other type of higher intense uses, may become more common. And looking at the transportation grid, what you see highlighted are mostly just the major thoroughfares, both going north, south, and east-west. So for the north-south ones, you've got the Pleasant View, Spokane Street, Idaho Street, Greens Ferry, and Highway 41. You've got east-west, would be Prairie, Poline, 16th, and Mullen Avenue and Southeast Way. As you see, this is the southeast corner of two major routes through Post Falls. Also, staff, you know, wanted to present, how does this location in relation to overall uses, trends, uses, or what we foresee in area to transition? What you see in red of Highway 41 and along Southeast Way and Mullen Avenue are commercially-oriented type developments up those corridors. On Spokane Street, you see some, some R2 duplex type development, and just south, in the orange, some multifamily type developments with some single-family homes, with west of Post Falls being a mix between industrial and commercial with some residential. When you look at this request in the context of the whole Prairie, you can see how to the north, as stated earlier with that matrix, that it's rural to the, up north, and as you transition to the south, it gets a little more urban, hence the, the picture on the left-hand side there, and in context. Also, when you look at, also, we wanted to present, where are other SC4 zones in, in Post Falls currently? You see that as part of Crown Point, there's some SC4 at the northwest corner of a future busy intersection, Spokane Street and Prairie. You have the SC4 as part of the city center plan to offer that mixed use, kind of more of an urban environment, to facilitate that plan. Recently, we approved the SC4 part of the Micake Acres Annexation, which is once again at a corner location between two intersecting routes, and then the crossings, which is, was a part of some alley-loaded product for that infill project at that time. And then in blue would be, this location would be the proposed location at 16th and Idaho Street. So I apologize for the long-winded introduction, but I just wanted to give a little more context and, and kind of explanation of SC4 and how it relates to this request prior to the applicant.
Thank you, John. Any questions, John, for applicant? Thank you. Who's presenting for the applicant? Mr. Wells.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for listening to all of this. Yeah, we did put forth the application for the annexation, and through the advice and talking with the city, we decided on the SC4 zoning. I was all for it until Bob said he'd like to see all SC4s, or SC smart zoning thrown out and, and rural put in, but we'll leave it as is. I'll, I'll leave it at that. This basically all started when the city wanted to, you know, get the right-of-way on 15th, 16th, and, and then we were annexing this particular property that has the property bordering Idaho and, and now 15th, 16th, whatever you want to call it. And then Mr. Adams thought he would like to join in also, because part of that annex, part of the road goes on his property, and then talking to Bob Cassoon next door, then he wanted to apply also, so we just kind of came in all at the same time. We've had several meetings with the city, or with the city department, planning and zoning department, to structure this and the best way we could put it forward to, to bring it in, and, and so we would like to have the property brought into the city.
Thank you. For the record, that's Randy Wells, the applicant. I'm sorry, Randy, I should have asked this.
Randy Wells, PO Box 430, Athol, Idaho.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Randy? Thank you very much. Staff report.
So the Planning Division looked at this and found that this is within the Post Falls area city impact. It is contiguous with the boundaries of the city, and that the smart code SC4 zoning designation may provide the flexibility to, to provide a, the appropriate zone for this transitioning area that's slightly awkward in being a busy intersection and close to some single-family homes, as well as a major corridor with some commercial development along with it. It would reduce the county pocket, as you see here, this here is the entire, entirety of the county pocket. I don't really have the exact acreage of that, but this would take a significant chunk out of that. It's also, the SC4 zoning would be compatible with the adjoining road classifications. And as stated in the, once again in the previous public hearing, that we generally do a, a neighborhood plan with annexation requests. This annexation request is unique in that the applicants, at this point in time, don't want to lay the foundation to dictate what the future developer may do there. They're more or less desiring to have a zone to allow that southeast corner of 15th and 16th and Idaho to transition appropriately, hence just the blanket SC4 zone. But the three that we have processed would be the crossings, Crown Point, and Micake The Engineering Division has commented and found that the project would not adversely impact the transportation system, and both the Idaho Street and 16th Avenue are currently constructed and meet roadway standards. For domestic water, it's located adjacent to the properties on Idaho and 16th Street, and that the city has facilities to provide service to the proposed annexation, and the proposed annexation and requested land use classification would not adversely impact the city's water system. And for water reclamation, the city has the available facilities to provide service to the proposed project. So as an update, if you've seen from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, it was recommended approval with modifications of condition number one. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we have met with the applicant to look at that condition and come up with an agreement of the verbiage for that. look at that condition and come up with an agreement of the verbiage for that condition. That condition is stated here, is condition number one, in that prior to subdivision of land, the city's development review committee, the DRC, will initiate a smart code infill neighborhood plan for the area that involves, or will affect, the property owners, and that the infill neighborhood will comply with smart code Title 18. And on that note, as you see here in red, this isn't a final conclusive determination from staff, but presumably, right at this location, the infrastructure doesn't really allow for an infill plan to really go into this area. So if at time we started getting a subdivision, we probably would look at what you see in red as an infill plan for that area to look at the transportation connectivity and zoning that would be most appropriate for that area in entirety. So now I'd stand for any questions you have from me regarding this proposed annexation.
Questions, John? Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Shannon. Mr. Barry Rubin would like to speak and is neutral.
Good evening, Barry Rubin. I'm not going to address any of the particulars of this proposal. It may be a very good idea, or it may not, but I would just like to address this more from a systemic approach. When you initiate your deliberations and analysis, it might be beneficial to think about what the objective of this is, or is this the objective in and of itself? This is pretty much similar to what I spoke about the last time I came up, which was also neutral, which I can't believe I did that as well, but oh, well. When you think about this, because something can be done, does that necessarily mean it should be done? And not just for this project, but for any project. On the face of it, this seems like a reasonable thing to do. I live not very far from here. One thing I would comment on from staff is that there was mention of it would not adversely affect transportation. If this does go to apartments and X number of units times two vehicles on Idaho Street at eight or nine in the morning, or four or five or six in the evening, I can't see how that might in and of itself be beneficial to the transportation system, and that goes for any develop. The other thing is just general infrastructure considerations as a whole for the city. More people, more infrastructures, more schools, this, that, and the next thing. So it could be a good project, it could not, I don't know, but when you engage in your analysis and your deliberations, please take into account the long-term ramifications of this project and see where that, where that leads us, especially impact on the tax base for the city and financial considerations.
And you've got three minutes.
We know what more residential housing does to the city's tax base and the net impact
Shall you want to say that?
Yes, my name is Dennis Brollick.
on the taxpayers.
I live at 917 East 12th Avenue.
Commercial is good, residences maybe not.
I'm in the diamond part of the, I would believe that would be the southeast corner.
So when you engage in your due deliberations, please take into account all these considerations.
And the infrastructure, this is called like another pocket zone, and I was kind of in
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Appreciate it.
amazement why we jagged the road to align it for the quote "school crossings" and stuff
That was it. I will allow you, if you take, is that all right, John?
there, when in this area, we have a really poor infrastructure right now of the depth
Sure.
Quick second, fill out a form, grab a form, I'll have you give it to the clerk when
of the water system, when they gave up Greens Ferry and Ross Point, when they did the development
you're.
Right behind you.
Right behind you.
stuff.
And you can come up and testify, and just hand that to clerk as you leave.
My water line is probably so shallow, when it froze and destroyed my house five years ago, and we're battling with both the city and my insurance company to cover it, my water meter froze. Now, when I talked to Hilly Kellogg many years ago, she wanted to dedicate that property to a park. She didn't mean to have the park across the street named, in her name, but as you know, the congestion, I think law enforcement deals with it too, is at times Idaho Street looks like 405 and the 101 connecting. And we're now having a new project just down the street on 12th that's combining, is just past Greens Ferry, where they're building another housing project, and that's probably going to add maybe 200 to 300 cars in the area and homes for both the 12th and 16th Street connections there. And one of the things is, since we lived in the area, we tried to keep track to most of these mailings and stuff, and we never got a notice that they were going to build a housing project just down the street, and it's very hard right now to get any help from the city to fix the problems we've done over the years from pocket zoning. And I think the problem is, is as you go on the south and east on that corridor, most of us, 500 or 600 homes that were pocket zoned many years ago, have the really shallow Ross Point water system, and I think it'd be unfair to allow this project to even advance beyond both park until we fix the present infrastructure we have already there. And to just realigning that road and not widening the 12th as a corridor then, if you're going to add that many cars in, we don't have a turning lane in the center like that is down further past Greens Ferry. So my objection is, is because I feel that this would add too much of the infrastructure stress already on the traffic of both Idaho and 12th and on 16th Street. And I believe some of the usage over the years of the five, some of the 500 homes that were in there, that's the, and you can look at an aerial of my property, all the kids come through and play in that park, we walk our dogs in that park and stuff, and I believe in the good faith of Hilly Kellogg, when she first mentioned that, that she wanted that as kind of a tree park area. I think that's the way we should leave it. It would also relieve the stress and as a green area for the other homes that are going on down the street towards Greens Ferry and the pocket zone. Because when I was first approached in 2008, they wanted to make a nursing home of 100 acres, and it would be sort of like what's next to Walmart, and I just kind of like gasped then because of what it would do for the house that I have down on American Drive. So again, I object to the project being annexed at this time.
Thank you very much. And I didn't read it because I didn't have it, but you would be opposed. And that was all testimony? Would the applicant like to rebut?
If they could put the plat map up, maybe I can straighten out a couple of things, if that's possible. Again, Randy Wells, PO Box 430, Athol, Idaho. I just wanted to answer a couple of things and maybe shed a little history here for everyone. Well, Miss Hilda, but if you go back in, yeah, that one right there, if you can put that up. If you can go, we do all miss Hilda, but if you go back in history, Hilda never owned that property except for, and when I get there, if you notice where it says SC4, you'll see the small rectangle, the two on the left. Hilda owns the one, owned the one closest to the new road, and her sister Betty owned the other one and all of that labeled SC4. So it really wasn't Hilda's call to say what she would do with it. However, we wanted it to be a park also. I'd still love for the city to go ahead and work with us to make that happen. However, we brought it to the city, and the city said they're parked out in that part of town. They've got more parks per capita than they need and that kind of stuff. It's still open and viable if, Mr. Mayor, if you want to appoint a committee to get that process working, we'll work with the city. It's not a donation because it's, this isn't Trump Plaza, this is Randy Wells living in Athol, Idaho. However, the concept of a park did come forward, it was talked about, actually in more than probably several meetings, I had some with some of your council members also, to make that happen. And your park department came back and just said, we've got too many parks in that area per capita, and we don't need any more. If it could happen, that'd be great. As far as traffic goes, I understand, that's why I live in Athol. The other side of the coin is, parks, people drive to parks, so I'm not sure how they would get there other than driving their car. So even if it was a park, you'd still have traffic, and it would still be, you know, throughout the day and that kind of a deal. But I just wanted to clarify that the property that Hilda Kellogg owned on that was the one rectangle spot, you can go back probably 50 years, 40 years anyway, and the rest of it belonged to Betty.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Without a close of public hearing, counsel deliberation.
I have several things. First of all, I would like to thank the three parties who did come together for this annexation to be done together. We've tried for the 15 years, I've been involved in city government, to get neighbors together to do these infill projects and annex themselves as a group instead of a little pocket here and a little pocket there. As far as the gentleman that, it sounds like he lives in the county pocket, we're trying to have all of the county pocket that is in the city limits of Post Falls annexed into the city. They use city services, many of them, and we would like to see that, or I would like to see that, I guess I'll speak for myself. Secondly, the SC4 zoning is not residential zoning, it's mixed-use zoning, so just to kind of address what Mr. Rubin said about having so much residential there, just sort of a clarification on that point. So I would be in favor of this.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, go ahead, John.
I would be in favor of it for all of the reasons that Counsel Wilhelm just mentioned, and it would be, I was in some of those discussions on that, you know, in a perfect world, being parkland, and I can't remember exactly what we were hoping would be there, but yeah, this is, anytime that we can reduce those, the number of county pockets that are right smack in the middle of the city is a good day. So I would be in favor.
Would you have a comment?
I would also be in favor. The SC4 zoning seems to be the most appropriate for that area because it's right in the middle of towns. There's mixed uses everywhere, and being the right-wing curmudgeon IMs, I believe the people that have that property should be able to do whatever they want with it, and that designation gives them that opportunity, so.
I appreciate it. In terms of traffic, you know, those are two major roads, and as we develop, as, not we, as the city of Post Falls develops more and more to the downtown area right outside our building here, there's going to be more traffic coming to this area anyway, and they're going to come down Idaho, they're going to come down Spokane. I like the conditions included in that, and I think any motion that is made should be assumed to include those commissions, conditions, and I'll talk to counsel when it gets to that point. But that's, I think it's a good condition. Let's take a look at what they're planning before the permits are issued, just to make sure that everything is all kosher, so to speak, but I think it's by far the best we can do for that area is to allow this type of mixed-use development.
Thank you. Helen, any comment?
The only comment I have was to address what Mr. Rubin mentioned about the more, the higher expense for taxpayers when it comes to rooftops. This is the one exception to that. When it's already infilled, it's already surrounded by city, this is when it's cheaper, actually, to turn them into rooftops than leave it as county, because we get the tax benefit from that. So other than that, I think it's a good project, and I agree with the SC4.
Skip, Betty Ann, any comment?
Well, I'm not saying I wouldn't vote for this SC4, but I would rather see SC3 there. If they had SC3, they could still have, they wouldn't be able to do anything they wanted to do with it like SC4. They'd still have, could have a restaurant, offices, retail, deli, bed and breakfast, they could still have a lot of those things, they just wouldn't be open to anything that they wanted to do. And boy, if you leave it up to anything they want to do, you don't know what's going to be in there, so I would be much more open to SC3.
Skip?
I actually agree with Betty on the SC3, but I think everybody else is comfortable with SC4. For, people brought up the travel and the trips per day if we build houses there, or we build whatever. Actually, if we stop and think about it, and we put a restaurant there, we put an office building there, instead of driving to the other side of town, people in that part of town get to drive three or four blocks, and they're done. There's a good example out in Hayden Lake, where they put in a very large development. On the corner of it, they put local commercial. So people can go to the gym without driving to the other side of town, they can go to the dentist, I believe it's a dentist that's located there. So there's advantages, the mixed use actually in many ways can reduce the amount of traffic that goes through a given intersection, or at least up and down Idaho's full length of it. So I think it's a real good use for it. I think a little less density of an R of the SC3 would be better, but I'll still support the 4.
I'd make a motion. I would move to approve the Garrett Adams Cassoon Annexation File Number A-14-03 with SC4 zone with a condition number one set forth by the city.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Court, please take the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Hisong.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion passes. We had two conditions.
That's what my question was, I wanted to make.
I was looking to John to see if that covered, they included the first condition, do we need to include the second?
Yeah, the second condition is like a boiler-type condition that runs with almost any annexation that we've processed, that governs the annexation agreement and the master development agreement to accompany future processing of.
Do you want that included in the motion?
Yes, I do, yes.
And before you modify, just to be clear, the condition that is being proposed to be included would be as modified by Mr. Manley previously, not as drafted in the staff report, is that correct? I just want to make it clear for me.
Okay.
Is that, I don't know, is that what you intended?
Yeah, the conditions that he put up on the screen.
It'd be as modified.
Right.
From the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to include that.
Second. Motion second, and further discussion. And although we voted, let's vote on the amended motion, please. Clerk, click, roll.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Hisong.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you, and I apologize, I was thinking the same thing you did, and I should have stopped before we voted the first time, so, thank you very much for all who participated. Next public hearing is the public hearing for the adoption of the 2012 International Residential Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Mechanical Code, and the International Fuel-Gas Code with amendments. And I believe we've got Harmony Connolly Oaks presenting, and I don't know if we've ever had you present before. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Harmony Oaks Building Division. This public hearing is for the adoption of the 2012 International Residential Code, Energy Conservation Code, Mechanical Code, and the International Fuel-Gas Code.
Excuse me one minute.
Just stated, yes.
I opened the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
You don't have to repeat yourself.
Okay. Any amendments to the codes are required to be put forth for public comments prior to adoption. Up until this point, there have not been any comments submitted to our office. As you know, the city of Post Falls is a jurisdiction that has a building inspection program, which is required to adopt by ordinance such codes as mandated by the state of Idaho. There is no fiscal impact on the city. There are no significant changes to the Energy Conservation, Mechanical, and the Fuel-Gas Codes. These are mostly language clarifications, general housekeeping. The residential code has had some changes. A few examples, without going through the entire book, excuse me, is the code is more specific to hazardous locations for safety, glazing of windows, stairways, landings, that kind of stuff. Flagpoles for residences have been added to the exempt from a permit section, so now residences can put up flagpoles without a permit. Wall bracing has been simplified, which is much more builder-contractor friendly for everyone involved. Many of Next public hearing is the public hearing for the adoption of the 2012 International Residential Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Mechanical Code, and the International Fuel/Gas Code with amendments. And I believe we've got Harmony Connolly Oaks presenting, and I don't know if we've ever had you present before. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Harmony Oaks Building Division. This public hearing is for the adoption of the 2012 International Residential Code, Energy Conservation Code, Mechanical Code, and the International Fuel/Gas Code.
Excuse me one minute.
Just stated, yes.
I opened the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
You don't have to repeat yourself.
Okay. Any amendments to the codes are required to be put forth for public comments prior to adoption. Up until this point, there have not been any comments submitted to our office. As you know, the city of Post Falls is a jurisdiction that has a building inspection program, which is required to adopt by ordinance such codes as mandated by the state of Idaho. There is no fiscal impact on the city. There are no significant changes to the Energy Conservation, Mechanical, and the Fuel/Gas Codes. These are mostly language clarifications, general housekeeping. The residential code has had some changes. A few examples, without going through the entire book, excuse me, is the code is more specific to hazardous locations for safety, glazing of windows, stairways, landings, that kind of stuff. Flagpoles for residences have been added to the exempt from a permit section. So now residences can put up flagpoles without a permit. Wall bracing has been simplified, which is much more builder-contractor friendly for everyone involved. Many of our neighboring jurisdictions have already or are in the process of adopting these 2012 codes. If the council approves this evening, the ordinance would be adopted under ordinance and resolutions later on within the agenda. And at this point, I will do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Harmony? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you would be the, the city would be the applicant.
Correct.
So we're not, I would assume we have no further staff report.
Correct.
Do we have anyone wishing to testify? So I'm sure you're not going to rebut yourself.
No, I'm not.
I will close the public hearing and congratulate you on having one of the shortest public hearings we've had. Good job. Counsel deliberation.
I'd make a motion.
I'd move to adopt the 2012 International Residential Code, International Mechanical
Code, and the International Fuel/Gas Code with amendments.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Hisong.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business, we have none. And citizens' issues is next. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address a council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Chief Merritt.
Thanks very much, Mayor and Counsel, Warren Merritt, for the record. Just a couple of things here, actually three things now. One, I'm glad the AC is working. It's a lot cooler than two weeks ago. Appreciate that very much. And then the second item is that it's getting really dry out there, so it's my chance to really get before the council and the audience and the citizens that are watching and just be careful with your fires. And then the third thing I wanted to do is just talk about the value of a smoke detector in the home. We experienced our second fatality this year in the Post Falls community, and just about a month ago. And in that residence, there was not a working smoke detector. So we're asking people to take the time to be sure that one's there, that it's working, that it's appropriately installed in the home, and then it's tested once in a while. There needs to be one on each floor, not in the kitchen. It's not a timer. And we'd also like to ask people to have them outside of their resident, or outside of the hallway, outside their bedroom. So we haven't had two fatalities that I could find since the early 90s here in the Post Falls community. So it's just really an opportunity for us to pass on a safety message and urge everyone to take the pertinent sort of precautions in protecting themselves and their families. So thanks very much for your time.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none. New business. This is an interesting one. Robot regulation. Mr. Malloy had brought this forth for consideration, and there was a video that we contemplated watching, but from what I heard from staff, the video didn't tend to add a lot to the topic itself. And so Mr. Malloy said he would make a brief introduction of why we're even considering this. If you read the paper this morning, you would see that Coeur d'Alene, City of Coeur d'Alene is also considering an ordinance in this regard. So, Joe?
And the reason we don't have the person that brought this to me, his name's Nick Smoot, is because he's presenting at the Coeur d'Alene City Council right now. Otherwise, he couldn't be two places at once. So he came to me a few weeks ago, it's probably been longer ago than that, with an idea that is twofold. One is that there are a lot of, lots of controversy going on lately in a lot of cities, municipalities, states, and so forth about, you know, those camera drones that are flying around and some things like that. Lawsuits are popping up. And in general, as technology advances, it seems that, you know, city ordinances and laws are always a step behind. It makes things tough on police department staff, legal staff, and so forth to try to figure out how to deal with technologies as they develop. So I thought it was a pretty smart idea in the case of robotics, which is a vastly growing industry. Everybody's seen Google's investments buying up every robotics company in the world, basically. Boston Technology, some of these things are getting very autonomous and very quickly. So idea number one behind that is some kind of ordinance to regulate the interaction between autonomous robots and people. While it's a bit ahead of its time and unrealistic at this point, it's going to be realistic pretty quick. And so get ahead of the technology, at least have a base work, a framework to guide off of when these things start popping up, and it can be modified later. Some of the platform, I guess, that went behind the suggestions that I think most of us have seen, I think legal staff's seen it, administrator, the mayor, was based off of pet ordinances, you know, pets wandering around, what are they allowed to do, not to do, you know? And obviously, that all gets passed back to the owner, which is the same onus of an owner of a robot who is operating autonomously in public property. So at least have some kind of framework to start with when these things start popping up. Option, the second aspect of this is honestly kind of marketing. There is no city in the country and that we know of in the world yet that has any kind of ordinance to regulate such activity. So it would be a fairly newsworthy event if Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, the North Idaho region are the first to be forward-thinking and have some kind of framework to allow these things. The idea being getting some coverage and getting the eye of some technology companies, some of which are already kind of looking at this area as a place to move, but there are lots of places to go. Silicon Valley, we've got to compete with Seattle. But really to sell the whole North Idaho area on being kind of a new hub of the robotics and technology industries. Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls in that instance seems to be kind of a match made in heaven in that, you know, Coeur d'Alene, you've got the lake, you've got the resort, the kind of panache that sells really well to corporate headquarters, but there's not a lot of room for industry there. Post Falls is right next door. We've got the infrastructure. We just discussed in our workshop that, you know, heavy industry is actually less expensive to put into, or light and heavy industry, to put into Post Falls. And the two communities together, marketing, could really, you know, do a one-two punch to attract some of these businesses here. Nick and some of his associates are already planning on some, you know, time-sharing offices in Coeur d'Alene, that sort of thing, for startups. And as this thing grows, with Post Falls involved, to be able to attract larger, more industrial-type firms, I think would be a good thing. Step one is to let the world know we're here. And so to be ahead of the technology and to be forward-thinking with this type of ordinance, I think would be a benefit, and he thinks would also be a benefit of this area. So that's the brief rundown.
Thanks, John. I know staff met with legal, staff met with legal this afternoon and reviewed the, I think it was a proposed ordinance that was being considered. There were several questions, concerns, et cetera, that I think led staff to believe and legal to believe that it's, we're not ready to pass the ordinance yet, but it's to get it in front of us and for discussion purposes, et cetera. So that was kind of a brief background on that.
Yeah, I did read the aforementioned article in the press today regarding what was being presented to Coeur d'Alene. And I'm not making that leap between how creating regulation is going to attract an industry. That, yeah, I just, I can't make that leap of, you know, Idaho's kind of the place where we like to have limited regulation on things. You know, and I know last year, because I took photos of the little Google Street View car that went all around town, and this would be something, obviously, I don't think they'd be able to do. Mine based only on the article that I read today in the Coeur d'Alene press. But yeah, so I think it's, it bears a conversation, but I'm not seeing where that would be necessarily a positive thing for economic development.
Mr. Cafferty?
I would just, the proposed ordinance, Councilmember Thorson is correct, it wouldn't be allowed under the existing ordinance.
Google Street View.
The photographs. The photographs. Correct.
So, Skip?
Doesn't the state of Idaho already regulate these?
If they do, I'm not familiar with it, councilmember. That doesn't mean they don't. There's many, many things, as being married has taught me, that I do not know about that exist, so, but.
We aren't going on that other topic. I don't see this as a city ordinance issue. It's, there's other ones where cities choose to do what I see as a state job, not ours. If they choose not to do it, then down the road maybe we need to do it. But something like this, I don't see it being pocketed by one or two cities. And pretty soon, we've got a quilt going here with 1,000 different ordinances and 1,000 towns in the same state. This is a state issue, if it is anybody's issue, and I wouldn't support anything locally on it.
During our.
I agree. Carrie, I agree. I don't see the leap to get from putting in a restrictive ordinance to attracting the people that build the thing we just restricted, so.
During our staff discussion, we had discussed flipping it from an ordinance to a proclamation to show support for such industry within the city of Post Falls. And so that's a possible discussion versus an ordinance.
And just sort of for, and I know that the mayor knows this, but Jobs Plus is working with some robotic companies too. So there are people, like Joe says, looking at this area. I think we should welcome them with open arms. So I think a proclamation is a really, really good idea.
Betty Ann?
I would support them coming, for sure.
Betty Ann, any comments?
No, I was just going to say the proclamation is much better than, if you're only going to use the word proclamation, that makes a big difference.
Kind of some clarification, I was going to try to pull up, it's not in the packet, so I was going to try to pull it up from my email of what some of the suggested regulations were, but it's not hooked up to the internet here. But they're pretty simple things, you know, is, like compared to a leash law with a dog, you know, can a dog be in public with or without a leash? Yes or no? You know, is an autonomous boat without an operator allowed to be on the river? Yes or no? And in what instances is it allowed to be on the river? Does it have to follow the same laws as humans do? And in this case, the proposed is, yeah, it has to follow the same laws as humans do. It's not really restrictive, it's just more clarifying. You know, is a person allowed to, you know, take photographs into somebody's window? No. This clarifies that a robot also is not. That sort of thing. So it's not really restricting anybody's ability to manufacture, anybody's ability to own. It's just to clarify some issues that may arise that, okay, is, considering that there's nothing operating this thing, what can it do? And so it's, like I said, kind of ahead of its time a bit because we don't really know what autonomous robots in public spaces are going to look like quite yet. We're starting to get an idea. But allow a framework to, okay, so now there's a boat operating itself in the river. How is this, how is applicable by law? And that's what this is intending to clarify. It's not really a regulation or a restriction per se.
Carrie?
The, is it the FAA, the aviation? They're already dealing with, right now, laws restricting the drone cameras. The news business is already dealing with that issue. And I'm thinking also, the other use right now of drone cameras, so the robotic cameras, tourism and real estate. Okay, so if I have a house and I, and I want my Realtor to get an aerial view of it because it's just so awesome, they're probably going to get a picture, or even a street view, they're probably going to get a picture of the neighbors or the neighborhood, you know? So there's, you know, there's a whole nether thing if you have to have written permission from a neighbor. But anyways, it's, it is so new. You're absolutely right. I don't know how we can get out in front of something that we don't even know all the ramifications that there will be.
Helen, any comments?
This is one of those things that Joe and I agree on. I, I don't think that we need to.
I'm writing a date down right now. It's scary.
I think that, I think it's not a bad idea to be kind of out in front of this thing. And I don't, I don't, I like the proclamation idea more than a regulation. I think regulation is a bad way to, you know, think of things. But I don't think there's anything wrong with having the dialogue, and I'm glad you brought it forward because it is something that's, that's starting to attach itself to our community. Somebody flew a drone through the fireworks display in Coeur d'Alene. So it's happening. And I don't think there's anything wrong with at least starting to have the dialogue and, you know, getting council and the police department and the fire department and everybody else involved with, what does this mean? What does this mean to us? And I don't know if it's going to be something that's going to be a leader in attracting business, but if it is, it is. So I'm with you, Joe. And let's go ahead and see what this, where this takes us, keep our eye on it.
Well, I think the main, the main reason when Joe and I were talking about it, I, you know, I too don't necessarily like the thought that we're being restrictive or regulating at this point, because we don't know what it is. But I do like the fact that we want to get something out to let people know that we're aware of it and that we would welcome the industry with open arms. So I do appreciate you bringing it up for discussion purposes. So, counsel, how do you, how do you want to act? Want to take any action on this? Want to direct staff to come up with a proclamation? What's your preference?
Proclamation.
Proclamation.
Sure.
Let's support a proclamation.
What are you going to proclaim? That we are open for business in Post Falls?
That's pretty obvious already.
Let's staff decide that.
I would say no action at this point in time. I just think that it's nice to have it brought forward. Quite frankly, when I first saw it on the agenda, I had no idea what you were talking about. I didn't, I had no clue. But now I've got much more of a clue about it. And I think that just that awareness alone is valuable, so.
And I guess just the last thing to say on that is the, the ordinance proposed is not particularly restrictive. We're talking about drones being flown over by a real estate agent. All that stuff is somebody operating by a remote control. And all of that's pretty well, I mean, even, even though there's a person operating it, it's still a fuzzy area of law. So to, to not, to wait until, okay, now we've got a drone that's operating completely autonomously. There's no person with a remote control to even go back to. A basic framework for that probably wouldn't hurt. And from a marketing standpoint, there's no points for second place. If another, if another city passes an ordinance like this, and Coeur d'Alene, from talking to them, sounds like they're going, they're going to, they get to be number one, they get all the press, and we have a proclamation saying, hey, we like business. Could be an opportunity missed. Maybe it's a pointless opportunity, but I think it's, it's interesting. I think it'll get some press, and I think it'll be, it'll show us as being forward-thinking anyway.
We've got two topics. We've got do-nothing, we've got, actually, three. We've got ordinance or regulation, resolution, we've got proclamation.
I think we all decided a proclamation would be much better than a regulation.
Not down here, we didn't.
I accept.
I say do-nothing.
Do-nothing.
I say ordinance.
Carrie?
I'm going to go on the do-nothing because I'm not ready, nor do I think that we are, when I say we, I don't think we're ready to create an ordinance. And I think a proclamation for a specific industry, we welcome industry here, so I'm going to.
So we've got two do-nothings, ordinance. Betty Ann?
Proclamation.
I'm going to go with those two because I think to some degree, we're a solution looking for a problem. And let's do nothing.
Do-nothing. Linda?
I'm going to go with the do-nothing also after.
So we'll do nothing at this point, but Joe, thanks for bringing it up for discussion. We'll follow Coeur d'Alene, see what they do, and we can always revisit it. Next item, Jack Vet catering permit. I think we had a bit of a miss or something was not included in the, when we addressed this a few weeks ago, and hopefully this will resolve.
No, this is new. So we did the.
I know it's new, but I mean, this was something else that had come up.
I think we opened a can of worms last week is what we did.
I think we opened a can of worms last week, is what we did.
Yes.
As I was here a couple of weeks ago for the chamber requesting a catering permit, now we have a catering permit from the Jack. They're wanting to, um, serve some alcohol at an event. And as you know, Title 23 does not allow for a licensee to be within 300 feet of a church. Cynthia Keck is here tonight, representing the Jack, and she has visited with the Presbyterian Church here, the pastor there, and they have no problem with this being approved. So we're here tonight to, uh, to seek your, um, approval to allow for them to have a catering permit within 300 feet of a church. Having said that, my recommendation would be, if you approve it, that we do the same thing we did with the, uh, the chamber, that we approve it ongoing unless it's revoked by you at a later time.
That's why I say it was something that we hadn't thought of last time, we're gonna fix it. So I appreciate your input. Discussion.
So do you need a motion?
Yes, we, uh, the law allows or requires the council to make an exception to that, so we would need the council to approve that.
Still moved.
And motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Thank you, folks. Ordinances and resolution. First ordinance, 2012 International Residential Code at All.
Move to place the ordinance, 2012 International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, and the International Fuel Code with amendments on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second for discussion. Clerk, please take your roll.
Suspense.
Hassan?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Loy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Cafferty.
I'm trying to decide if I can read it better by making it bigger on the screen or if putting my glasses on reading the paper is easier. I think I'm going with the paper. Thank you for indulging me. An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending section 15.04.010 of the Post Falls City Code to adopt the 2012 International Residential Code with revisions adopted by the state, adopting the supplements and adopting additional amendments, amending section 15.48.010 to adopt the 2012 International Energy Conservation Code as amended by the state. Amending section 15.52.010 to adopt the 2012 International Mechanical and Fuel Gas Codes, providing severability, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, 2012 International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, and the International Fuel Code with amendments, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion, a very quick second. Further discussion?
Yes.
Clerk, please take your roll.
Moy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Next ordinance is Robert's First Edition Right-of-Way Vacation.
Move to place the ordinance on Robert's First Edition, file number V-14-01, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Mr. Cafferty?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of Idaho, providing for the vacation of a portion of Catherine Street and 17th Avenue right-of-way in section 34, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, described herein, providing for disposition of the vacated right-of-way as described herein, providing an effective date, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to approve the ordinance, Robert's First Edition Right-of-Way of Vacation, file number V-14-01, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Please take your roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
I'm always in favor of a vacation, so I'll go aye, too.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item is resolution on the preliminary budget.
And before, I just wanted to mention this resolution, cuz we kinda go through this every year, and I know Alan's new, allows Jason to put in the legal notice into the press for the public hearing that will come forward. Currently, the proposed budget that'll come forward to council will not include any type of property tax increase. So this would set the revenues and allow for us to move forward with continuing. Jason and I pretty much have the recommended budget together, but we're finalizing it, and we'll get you the copies soon, prior to the public hearing.
Thanks, Shelley, thank you.
Move to approve the resolution, preliminary budget.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. We're almost through. Next item, police update. Chief's gonna introduce Captain Knight. Or do you wanna just have Captain Pat Knight come forward?
I'll just introduce myself. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to speak here tonight about the recent trip to the FBI Academy, or the National Academy. Also wanted to not just thank you for your support, but thank the city administrator and the chief as well for allowing me to, uh, to miss work for a while, go back and attend the academy, which, which is certainly a huge accomplishment. I really enjoyed the experience and share some of that with you here tonight. I do have to make a disclaimer before we start. As I was putting this, uh, PowerPoint together, sent it off to Kit this morning, thought to myself, boy, it sure looks like I was on vacation for 10 weeks. But I take a lot of pictures, I took advantage of the weekends, and my family came out after graduation. We spent about 11 days traveling up and down the coast. Just to, just to take in all the history back there was just, was just awesome. So, I'll start with just kind of the selection process itself. How that works is you basically log into Virtual Academy, the FBI Virtual Academy, print out an application process. You fill that out. You send it off to your chapter, which for us is the Idaho-Montana chapter of the FBI, to get approval to attend the, the National Academy. When that comes back, it has to be signed off by your agency head, department head, which then gets shipped off to the FBI office down in Salt Lake City. And you get established, basically established to put on a list, and that list can be several years long. I think I was on it probably four or five years before the, the selection process really started to move forward. They notified me, said I was going in 2017, then about six months later, I think it was, chief, they said going in 2015, and then they called back in a couple of weeks, says can you leave in April? So we really kinda sped through that process, but it is a lengthy process to get going on that. Only about 2% of all law enforcement officers ever get selected to go to the FBI National Academy. I am proud to, uh, to claim that Post Falls City here, the police department right now, we have four people who have actually graduated that academy. So, um, I think that's, that speaks wonders for the city. So, again, the chosen by the Idaho-Montana chapter, and for successful completion of the program, you get 17 college credits in your 10-week work program down there from the University of Virginia. Kind of a layout of the academy there, that's the middle part. The FBI National Academy, kind of what it is in a nutshell, without boring you by PowerPoint, it's professional development for law enforcement leaders worldwide. We had 220 people in our class. Of those 220 people, there were 46 states represented in 17 countries. So we had all kinds of folks that attended that, so. There's kind of a layout of the campus itself, just threw that in there. 255th session reloaded. The reason I say reloaded is, uh, the, uh, the FBI director himself said, well, we made history. Where the, this is the class that was sent home last year during the furlough. When the FBI or the government shut down, this class had just started, they were two weeks into it, and were sent home. So 180 of the students actually returned with a 255th, and 40 of us were new. That did not go down last year. So they kinda split the class up, sent, sent some last time to try and make that up. The classes that I took on this is a lot like going to college. You log on, you take the courses you want, and the first day you get there, you kind of, uh, go through those courses and make sure it is what you want to take. So, managing death investigations, excellent class. Computer crimes for police supervisors, as you know, that's really where it's going in law enforcement, is computers. So gotta keep up with technology. Psychopathological behaviors in violent offenders was a phenomenal class, and really getting to learn the ins and outs of, of why people do what they do. Behavior-based investigative strategies for violent crime, leadership ethics, decision-making. And of course, everyone has to take physical fitness in law enforcement. So, uh, those are kind of the courses you take. How it's set up is Monday, Tuesday, you're, you're in class. Wednesday is kind of an enrichment and challenge day. They always have a physical fitness challenge every Wednesday. And then you have enrichment speakers that evening that come in to talk, that are phenomenal speakers, so. Dorm life, tough to get used to. It wasn't so hard when I was in the Marine Corps, it wasn't so hard going to the police academy when you have a family and you go back to living with a roommate and you share a bathroom with four other guys. It, uh, it really is tough. Your first day, you really gotta schedule when you're gonna take a shower and that kind of thing. So, that was a rack we lived in, that was a little cubicle I sat and typed many, many papers at. It's like, as I said, going to college, you're typing midterm papers, you're taking tests, weekly exams, and you're taking finals, so a lot of time spent in the dorm. The FBI mission statement, a lot like most, most agencies, are very rich in tradition, that everywhere you go, you're gonna see up and down the hallways, the FBI's mission statement, their core values. So a lot like we have here at the city. You see it in City Hall, you see it down at the police department. I found out why the FBI's so smart. They have a three-story library. However, about five weeks into it, I asked one of the directors, I said, where is everybody? I never, it's always empty. So, I'm still baffled as to how they got so smart, cuz they're never in the library. But the library's beautiful. Any kind of book, any kind of video, any kind of computer you can think of are, are there. So, uh, we did spend a lot of time in there doing a lot of research. The director on graduation day called us the cursed. And the reason they did that seemed to be everything went wrong with our class. Again, like I said, 180 returning, 40 were new. Power outages were, were weekly with us. For whatever reason, big storms would happen, you'd hear people yelling down the hallway cuz their rooms are flooding, the windows would leak. So, um, it was, it was a little comical there. The water outage is there, that, that's, in all honesty, we went without hot water for three days at a time, I think twice when we were there, so you like cold waters and showers. Little embarrassing, were the firefighters still here? Yeah, we were saved. Few of our guys were saved by our firemen. When the power outage went out, they were stuck in an elevator for a couple hours, so the fire department had to come and save them, and they were a little embarrassed by that. But it seemed to be everything was re, uh, when we got down there after the furlough happened, it, a lot of construction was going on. So you'll see in some of the photos I got here that you, when you head down there, you got all these expectations of the J. Edgar Hoover Building and wanting to see what it really looked like, and you'll see some of the pictures that we arrived. But it seemed to be everything was closed off for us. They opened it up about two weeks before we graduated. But that's just how it was. Eating in a trailer, everything was a portable, they had a portable trailer for us at the time. Missing buses, we'd go out to, go on a field trip, they'd say mandatory field trip Saturday, we'd stand there for an hour and a half and no one scheduled a bus. So, just some of those things that, it just seemed to be, we were the class that was cursed. No one else had these issues, so, but it still was a great time. Construction in all directions, this is day one when we got there. Looking out the windows, looking at your barracks, and everything seemed to be under construction. But I wanna ma, I'm not, I'm not here to complain, I'm here to say that it wasn't all bad. The weekends you spent, what, what I spent, it was taking in the Civil War battlefields, those types of things. Had a couple of guys that I really got along well with, and we traveled every weekend and saw some of the sights. You'd find us at the Orioles and Nationals games every weekend. And I'll spin through some of these real, real quick so we can get everyone out here. But Washington DC, if you've never been to the Cherry Blossom Festival, the crowd on the right, that was in every direction. Everyone's there to see the, the trees and the Japanese, that, you know, the story behind those. So, um, I say, you guys gotta come to North Idaho sometime, you're just looking at trees and these kind of people here. But it, uh, it was, it was a neat event. Some of the attractions that you went up in, obviously, if you've never been to DC, the monuments, just some neat, neat history back there to, to go through. Counselman Hassan, you'd love the Marine Corps Museum, I don't know if you've ever seen that, but probably the best museum I've ever had a chance to go to. I know the chief told me about it when he went, and it was, we spent about four hours in there, my family and I, we still didn't see it all, so it was really, really neat experiences. New York City, we, uh, we got along well with one of the guys who ended up being an attorney on the 70, 75th floor there. He took us up there, and we spent about three hours up in his offices, just looking at the view of New York City. So it was, uh, outstanding. That's the family and I at the 911 Memorial, it just opened about three weeks before they came down. Uh, I'm sorry, three weeks before we got down there, the museum opened up. The picture on the right that I took is Vincent, um, I wanna say it's Gianova. He was my roommate's cousin. He was with the 5th Ladder Division over in New York City when, when 9/11 hit. It was, it was his first cousin, they were very close, and it was his 40th birthday that morning. He was just getting off shift and made a phone call home, his kids were waiting for him to come home and spend his birthday with him, and they never found him, he never returned. So, we, they have a wall there that you can actually punch someone's name in there, and they give the story about the person. So, uh, it was, it was very, very touching, so it was neat. But the 9/11 memorial was just outstanding. Arlington National, changing of the guard, Arlington Cemetery, was very, very neat. They did find a horse that was big enough for me, I think it was a Clydesdale, but they told me it wasn't. The only horse I could get on, my feet didn't drag. So, uh, we did Gettysburg by horseback, but it, it's all narrated as you walk through the battlefields. It was just some neat, neat experiences. But, um, Law Enforcement Week, we were there in May, so Law Enforcement Week is very, very emotional as well. We got to go down to the wall down in Washington DC, the memorial wall, the fallen officer wall. And then that evening, they had the Thin Blue Line presentation, which is very touching. And I, while I was there, I wanted, I made it a point to get down to Linda Huff's memorial as well, down to see her on the wall. And, uh, so took a picture of that there. Cops Kids Day, if you're there in the spring, I think chief was there in the spring as well, you get to spend a day with survivors of their family members. One of their family members or both were killed in the line of duty, and these are the surviving kids. They get to come spend the day with you. So some of the stories that they tell you and, and things that they've challenged, they've encountered, it really was an excellent day to go out and have fun with these kids. Treat them to lunch, spend the day with them, and they left signs before they left on, you know, how thankful they were for everything. But it was just, these, these are days that are very, very emotional, and it was just so rewarding to do. A lot of the local history there, Mary Washington's House in Fredericksburg. Again, this was a hike out through the Battle of the Woods. Buddy of mine says, hey, look out, you know, behind you, and I turned around, the snake was behind me. So, stuff I just don't normally see here, I guess. But, um, a couple of challenges we did. One is the, uh, the Yellow Brick Road Challenge. That's a little over six-mile challenge on Week 10. It's through the Marine Corps Base, it's back through the woods, there's 20 obstacles involved in that six points, 6.2, 6.3 miles, and most of them are ropes courses. And that's a Yellow Brick Road Challenge, and, and the Yellow Brick Challenge, as you complete that, you leave with the yellow brick. The other challenge they offered to you when you're there is a Blue Brick Challenge. It's a 34-mile swim, accumulative while you're there. So you try to get in the pool every morning, every night, if you wanna do it. I think about a quarter of our class completed it, but that was something that, that I found, um, I did, anyway. But it was, it took me about five and a half weeks to get through it, but it was, it was a challenge. And we did have to work, too. I wanna make sure this wasn't just a vacation. You were in class every day, you had to present PowerPoint presentations to students. You had to, like I said, midterms, there was finals. This class here is a, uh, one of our, um, instructions were to, to bring a course or a, a case to the class that may not have been solved, that you might, might want some help on. And this is one of our, about nine-and-a-half, 10-year-old case now. And I took it to the, to the class, got some great ideas on, on things that we haven't tried yet. So when I got back, wanted to get with Greg and, and work on some of those things. But, so it really was, uh, it was beneficial for some of those courses, uh, to get the experience from the other folks in the room. And you have law enforcement agents all over the world there. As I said, the guest speakers here, the gentleman speaking here was in the movie Black Hawk Down. He was the actual pilot that was, that lived through that. He came and spoke one night for a couple hours. Most of these are all success stories and survivor stories, and people, they just come to talk to you and really inspire you. So it really is something to, to, to look forward to every Wednesday evening. And a big part of the academy there is the context, you make the law enforcement professional context. Nick, I'm in, I'm in touch with these folks, I've been back three or four weeks now, and have emailed probably daily with, with most of these guys. New York City on the left, Kentucky, Cleveland, these guys that really, um, anything they want, we, you know, we, we need, we correspond with each other. Two of them are already looking at our chaplaincy program, cuz they've got them back there, but they're just not running the right way, they feel. They've already taken some packets from us, and they're, we, we learn from each other. But it, uh, the context is just a huge part of that academy. And of course, my favorite day, the day you come home to your family. So, um, in a nutshell, that was it. I just wanted to get through it, give you an idea of what it was about. A lot of, uh, a lot of leadership training, a lot of ethics training, and things of that nature, so.
Pat, thank you.
Thank you, that was great. Congratulations.
That's a huge commitment on your part and your family's part, and we appreciate, and thank you for your dedication.
Thanks for representing.
34 miles, that's pretty awesome.
I must be getting old, but I remember when Captain McLean gave the same, uh, gave a similar report, so I've been here a while, I guess.
But we were more amazed that he was able to complete the Yellow Brick Road than with Pat.
That's what I remember about that, was the Yellow Brick Road, so. Thank you, Pat. Dave?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'm before you tonight as part of a counsel request that was triggered due to a letter to the editor that was published this week. due to a letter to the editor that was published this week, I guess chastising me and the city for not selling season boat passes. This intent to suspend it for the summer was part, was mentioned as part of the Avista workshop when we looked at the limited parking there. To put in perspective, we currently have 44 boat spaces available. We did pick up a few with some adjustments Avista made, but still, 44 is about half of what we normally have. Last year, we sold 75 season boat passes, and to date, I've had two complaints come to me about it. One of them was from the gentleman who wrote the letter. So, I'm open to any questions.
And Dave, you mentioned last year that when we did sell season passes, you received six complaints regarding the season passes themselves.
Well...
So, we received more complaints when we were selling them than we've received by not selling.
That was actually for the 4th of July. We historically get complaints, probably half a dozen before the season starts because we're opening late, and they feel that there should be a discount from the $25. Probably another half dozen at the end of the season because they could not get parking spaces. Last year, for the 4th of July, I had received five complaints after the 4th because they could not get a parking spot. It says on the pass that we do not guarantee parking. We started that about three, four years ago. That was the same time when we suspended non-resident boat pass. So, yes, but we're getting complaints either way, but we got less, but still.
Do you have any comment?
Yeah, so to be clear, you can still, for anyone who didn't read the letter to the editor, you can still launch and park your boat there, you just cannot buy the season pass, which is, provides a bit of a discount versus...
Correct.
Coming to do, you know, just coming and paying it when you come.
Right. And you actually can launch at the park for free. You pay for the parking, you can go move it somewhere else, move into a neighborhood. We also have been providing for people, because of the limited amount, and we don't know from day to day, week to week, if they'll even have the launch open because as they're moving equipment in and stuff. But, we're giving them a map to the closest launch, which is the county one on the south side of the river.
Black, what do you call that?
Down by the Cedars?
Yeah.
No, not Blackwell, there's actually a small county lot, it's on...
Oh, right on Green Bay.
Riverview Drive.
Riverview.
Driftwood.
Yeah, yeah. Not Driftwood.
Driftwood, I don't know. I don't have a boat. I've got a tractor, and we have no parking for tractors.
It's on Riverview Drive, just west of Green Bay.
Right, but we're handing out a map, and we're showing them what is at that site. It's small, it's not developed, it doesn't even have a Santa Can, but they get a picture of it so they can see it, they get a map to it and the description.
The point is, unfortunately, it's inconvenient having Avista, but it's, that part of it's beyond our control.
Right.
Fewer complaints than typical, so unfortunately, we can't make everybody happy all the time, but we try.
Right. I understand it's going to cost them more money. You know, right now, it's, if you come in after 3 o'clock, it's $5. All day is $6.
Any questions, Dave?
I'd just make a comment that I appreciate you coming to us to talk about it, Dave, but I wouldn't sweat it.
I'm not.
And we did present this information in public at a council meeting when Avista came and presented on the dam, and that was one of the complaints, was that he didn't feel we had presented it at a public meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel comments?
Oh, I have. I would just like to say thank you. The last time I will say thank you, well, not the last time I'll say thank you, but for this specific event, but sincere thanks again, not just for this year, but through the years, to the PD, parking rack, the Streets Department, the permitting people. It has been a pleasure working with y'all for 25 years on the parade. So, I'm sure it'll be back next year, and probably someone perkier than me.
Thanks for your help on it.
Yeah, it turned out great, but thank you all.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else?
I would just like to add that I think it's going to be very hard to find somebody to take your place, and I'm not just saying that, you have done a fabulous job.
I had a whistle, Betty Ann, I had a whistle. Thank you.
Geez, did she use it.
Ellen? I would just like to mention too, I spent a lot of time down here this weekend with the festival, and I was surprised, I was thankful to the city and everybody involved. You know, it was just a great event. I happened to go down to Camelan, you know, what, a couple hours after they closed it down, I couldn't find one speck of garbage anywhere. I thought the citizens did an awesome job of picking up after themselves at the lawnmower races, I just thought it was a great, great event. Really makes you feel good about your hometown and that, you know, that home, small-town feeling that you get, so I'm proud of Post Falls this weekend.
I'm sorry I missed it, I was family commitments out of town, but I understand everything went well, so thank you all for all your participation and contribution. And there's no counsel, or mayor, whatever I am, mayor comments, but I do understand we need an executive session.
Yes.
Move to... How long?
10 minutes.
10.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 67-23451C to conduct deliberations concerning labor negotiations or to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency. Further, that no action will be taken during this session, and the session will last no longer than 10 minutes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Court, please take the roll.
Dawson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhun?
Aye.